Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Pierce County Council. It's Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. The time is 3:01 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Hoover.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchen. Councilmember Morell.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
You have seven members present.
We have all seven members present in a quorum. Item number three is our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, our Moment of Silence, and our Land Acknowledgement. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Councilmember Hitchen, followed by a Moment of Silence dedicated to our men and women serving overseas in our military, and then the Land Acknowledgement read by Councilmember Hitchen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and seareded these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is one small step towards true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchen. We're now at Section Four, which is the approval of our agenda. Are there any objections to approving today's agenda as presented? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comments on any final action item. This does not include items placed on the consent agenda simply for introduction and scheduling. On today's consent agenda, there is one set of minutes for approval, subject to public comment. During Sections Eight and Nine of the agenda, we will take public comment on each resolution and ordinance individually. And then finally, under Community Forum, there will be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not up for final action on today's agenda. For information on the rules for public participation, please review the bottom of Page One of today's agenda. So that brings us to our consent agenda, Section Five. Does any member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda today? Seeing none, Vice Chair Campbell for a motion, please. How about we go to Councilmember Morell for a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. As indicated, there's one final action item on the consent agenda. Those are minutes from the October 1, 2024, meeting. Any member of the public wish to provide comment on that final action item, starting here in council chambers? Please come to the podium. Not seeing anybody do so, Mr. Dominique, anybody in the Zoom room on our consent agenda?
For any member of the public that would like to provide comment on the one final action item on today's consent agenda, please press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Chair.
With no hands, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on adoption of the consent agenda?
Councilmember Hoover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
I think he might be frozen.
Councilmember Campbell.
He's excused.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, excuse me, Vice Chair Campbell? Vice Chair Campbell?
You can hear me now?
Yes.
If you can hear me.
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. We have some work to do on broadband connection where you're at, Vice Chair Campbell. Councilmember Denson's on it.
Indeed.
For Section Six, Messages from the Executive and Other County-Elected Officials, there's one message from the executive transmitting the following ordinance, which was approved and signed on October 8th, 2024. And it was ordinance 2024-546. This is an ordinance of the Pierce County Council establishing a prohibition on the use of compression brakes along Waller Road East in the Mid-County Community Plan area and Creveston Drive Northwest in the Key Peninsula Community Plan area. That brings us to Section Seven, Proclamations, Recognitions, Awards, and Presentations. Our first proclamation today proclaims October 17th as Great Shakeout Day. You're all wondering what that is. In Pierce County, I'd like to invite our recipients to the podium as Councilmember Herrera reads this proclamation into the record. Our guests include Amy Gillespie, interim Director of the Department of Emergency Management, and Katie Arthur, Outreach Coordinator for Emergency Management Department here. Welcome to both of you. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. A proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming October 17th, 2024, as Great Shakeout Day in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas Western Washington is known for earthquakes, which can strike without warning and pose significant risk to communities and individuals; and whereas Pierce County and the Pierce County Department of Emergency Management are committed to promoting safety and resilience within the community; and whereas preparedness and education are crucial in mitigating the impact of seismic events and ensuring the safety of all citizens; and whereas the Great Shakeout is a global initiative dedicated to promoting earthquake safety through practice and awareness; and whereas residents of Pierce County businesses and other organizations are encouraged to sign up for the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill at www.shakeout.org/Washington to show their commitment to earthquake preparedness; and whereas on Thursday, October 17th, 2024, communities, organizations, and individuals worldwide will participate in the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill at 10:17 a.m. to enhance their preparedness and response skills; and whereas community members, schools, businesses, and organizations in Pierce County are encouraged to actively participate in the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill at 10:17 a.m. by practicing the vital safety measures of drop, cover, and hold on. Additionally, community members are urged to sign up for the PC Alert, Pierce County Emergency Notification System, to receive timely alerts and updates during emergencies; and whereas, community members can also use the Great Shakeout as an opportunity to check on their existing emergency kits or assemble a new one. Emergency kits should contain essential supplies such as water, non-perishable food, medications, and other necessities to sustain individuals and families; and whereas, the Great Shakeout is also a great time for organizations to review earthquake safety procedures to ensure employees and customers have a swift and active response in the event of an earthquake. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this 15th day of October, 2024, by the Pierce County Council that on October 17th, 2024, is Great Shakeout Day in Pierce County, Washington. By engaging in the aforementioned activities, community members, schools, businesses, and organizations contribute to a more resilient and prepared Pierce County.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Madam Director.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the council, and thank you to the council chair for this opportunity to share a little bit of the activities that we have planned around the Great Shakeout. As you know, one of the most significant hazards we have in Pierce County and have experienced here in Pierce County is earthquakes. And it's important, not only do our Pierce County employees know what to do, but our entire community knows what to do during an earthquake, but before an earthquake of how to prepare their families and their households, but also what to do after an earthquake. And so we've really, our team is very focused on those activities on the day of the Great Shakeout. So I'm really excited to introduce you to Katie Arthur, one of our public outreach coordinators. And this is her very first time presenting to the council today. So Katie, I'm going to turn it over to you to tell them all the exciting things we have planned.
Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you for letting me be here today. As Amy said, I'm the Outreach Coordinator for Pierce County Emergency Management. So I like to do a lot of outreach through all of the county. This is one of my favorite events of the year. It is the one time where we get to practice a very serious hazard we have in our county without there being a hazard. So we live in earthquake country. Every 30 to 50 years, we experience an earthquake over 6.0. Who remembers the Nisqually quake in 2001? Yes. So in order for us to get ready for the next earthquake, so it's not if, but when, we're going to practice. So this week, on Thursday, October 17th, at 10:17, all of us will drop, cover, and hold on for 60 seconds, and then we get to practice our evacuation routes. So whether you be at school, or at work, or at home. It's also very important to register. We have, you know, fun rivalry with other counties and states. Last year, Pierce County had 200,000 people register, which is wonderful. But we have 900,000 in the county, so I think we could beat that number this year. I also brought some fun things to share, and maybe you guys can share them as well, if you'd like. We created a bingo card to encourage people in Pierce County to add five items to their preparedness kit. When they've completed those five items, there's an email address that they email it to above, and then their name is entered to win a big prize. We also have flyers available that are a wide variety to reach our community. And then lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, of course, we really want to promote the bucket list, having everyone, you know, have a small or large supply of preparedness items, water, food, don't forget your pets. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions?
Awesome. We love competition around here, healthy competition around here.
Great.
Thank you for making it fun and bringing some lively spirit to taking our safety incredibly seriously and having a good time doing it. Before we go take a photo to try to practice together, who has remarks? Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you so much. Thanks for being here, and this is, this is very, very important. I love the bingo card idea. I'm assuming, I was just going online, can I find that on your Facebook, maybe?
Yes, Facebook and our webpage.
Okay, so that way we can be sharing that out as well. And I think it was maybe two weeks ago that we had a fire drill. And so now I know where to go. I know where our, our station is, so looking forward to participating and maybe getting out of my office a little faster than I did last time because I got stuck in the stairwell for a while. But now you kind of know what it's going to be like, and it was, it was slow coming down from the 10th floor. Chair Mello is with me, so, all right, thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair, and it's always good to address the most professional emergency management team in the whole United States.
Right.
This is really important stuff, you know. We do have earthquakes here. It's been a long, 2001's been a while. Time ago. But I do remember that that earthquake, I was in Kent working. I had a young father, two babies at home, my wife was at home. And I remember the first thing, cell phones did not work. You know, you worried about, and then I heard it was in Nisqually, and I'm way up here, and it was shaking like crazy up in Kent. How bad is it at home? So you're really worried about your family and stuff like that. I grew up in Southern California, and I should have, should have trained with my family what to do in an earthquake back then, so I'd maybe be less worried about what's happening at home. But this is a good reminder, because emergency management, even you are the most professional in the United States, we have to take care of ourselves at home. This is what this is today. We're talking about this today, so you can go home and talk to your kids at home and come up with a plan of action at home, because it starts at home or wherever you're at, at work, in your business, or anything like that. So we appreciate you letting us know about this and taking this serious. So it can happen any, any, anytime, so, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate the work of the department in trying to find creative and fun ways to engage with the community, and we'll make sure to share. Also, I want to acknowledge and thank you for the, I have not had a chance to read. We've got an actual plan for Anderson Island should, should something like this happen where we need to do evacuations, and I'm excited to kind of dive in. They've been asking for it. And, and I know that when we think about all the different geographies and communities across the county, how they could prepare, what they need to think about as far as what happens if, not when, that it, like, it will happen when, at some point. Sorry, it will happen, not if, it will happen. That's what I meant to say. And just really appreciate that we continue to do this. We do this in our schools all the time. Some families do this, not very many, but it's like something if you think about. So when we all do it together, it makes, it's a little bit more fun. I mean, my mom had a huge thing about doing these late at night. She'd wake us all up and make us try escape the house in pajamas, so it was quite fun. But, so, speaking of night, if you miss the 10:17 a.m., there's another opportunity, because it'll be 10:17 p.m. There's no rule saying you can't think about what happens 12 hours later. What would change about what your response would be if an earthquake happened at 10:17, things like that. So you've got actually two opportunities, but the official time is 10:17 a.m. So thank you very much for the work, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera brings up an interesting point. There is a decent chance that cellphone communications will be down. We've been trained so well to sign up for PC alerts with our cell phones, so we can get alerted of emergency communications and instructions. What's going to happen if we're not getting PC alerts on our mobile phones in this kind of event?
That's a really great question. And one of the outreach activities that we do is to talk about different ways in which you're going to learn of emergency information. So one of the ways that we've learned from past incidents is, yes, you might not be able to make an outgoing call or receive an incoming call, but you may still be able to receive text messages. And so there is still the ability to possibly communicate that way depending on your location. In addition, we encourage everyone to have an emergency weather radio that is not, that has battery operated, or a hand-cranked one, so that you can receive those emergency messages via radio, via the emergency alert system. We will be able to utilize that system as well. And then a part of our other outreach opportunities is what we call Pierce County Neighborhood Emergency Response Teams. So going back to some of the other points that you made, we really encourage our neighborhoods to start to check on each other and then establish that. And a part of that is what we call an amateur radio. And so we will be able to put messages out over amateur radios to be able to get information, in addition to putting out the emergency messages over radio communication with law enforcement and fire that can then go start to safely get into neighborhoods to provide that information. So it's not a single system that you rely on. It's a multi-pronged system that we're going to get those emergency messages out to.
Thank you for sharing that, and there's a lot of good information you have for us today. We'll be sure to share it out through the council's communication channels with our constituents, and really important to practice so that we can react without thinking when the events come. That's why we practice, right? So we can just react without thinking, and it's muscle memory. So thank you for taking this so seriously and arming our community with resources and training.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Are we seriously going to get under this table? Are we up for it?
I don't think we should do it.
Okay.
Oh, my. Amazing.
Yeah, we have one.
Great idea.
All right, here you go. You guys are doing great.
I'm not getting back, if that's all you can get.
Yeah, I can see your hair.
You're doing great.
There's a spot, you're right here.
There we go.
Where?
Right.
Didn't know this was light. I wanted to get a huge, oh, there we go.
All right. One, I'll bet this quick. One, two, three.
Hold on tight, everybody.
Do you actually want a normal one, or are you good?
No.
We want to do that for anyone.
The last year, we were.
I'm sure that's going to give our communications manager some one thought.
Rule with. We, we truly do look forward to working with you to get the serious message out to the people of Pierce County, so thanks for helping us do that. Ms. Hudkwan, I'm interested to see what you're going to make us do for this next proclamation. Next, the council will be proclaiming October 19th as Community Conflict Resolution Day in Pierce County, inviting up Ms. Mary-Lise Hudkwan, Director and of the Center for Dialogue and Resolution. If you have a friend here.
This is first week, we're going to let him just.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you for being here. Councilmember Hitchen's going to read this into the record.
Thank you, Chair. A proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming Saturday, October 19th, 2024, as Community Conflict Resolution Day in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas nations, federal, state, regional, and local governments have an interest in promoting civility, understanding, improved communications, and conflict resolution via the use of facilitation, training, conciliation, and mediation. And whereas Pierce County promotes the use of and access to creative and productive, community-based dispute resolution by highly qualified mediators. And whereas mediation is an empowering, timely, and effective way to settle disputes as attested to by 86% settlement rate. And whereas, anyone in Pierce County has access to a community-based mediation center to resolve conflicts between family members, neighbors, tenants, landlords, merchants, consumers, employees, employers, schools, civic organizations, and government agencies. And whereas jurisdictions and taxpayers of the state of Washington save millions of dollars annually in court costs for cases that have been settled by community-based dispute resolution centers rather than court hearings. And whereas, the conflict resolution process increases the capacity of our community to turn conflict into productive resolutions. This improves the quality of life for all community members. And whereas, Pierce County must lead by example and promote conflict resolution by engaging in civil dialogue throughout any and all interactions. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this 15th day of October, 2024, by the Pierce County Council that Saturday, October 19th, 2024, is Community Conflict Resolution Day in Pierce County, Washington. The Pierce County Council extends its deepest appreciation to the Center for Dialogue and Resolution for its vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Their ZAS dinner and auction on Friday, October 18th, 2024, will celebrate their 30 years of peacemaking in Pierce County and serves as a tribute to their commitment to fostering dialogue and understanding, helping build a more connected community for all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause. Ms. Hudkwan, welcome. Thanks for being with us. Remarks, please.
30 years ago, isn't that amazing? So some of you will recognize Dennis Flanagan. I mentioned from a historical standpoint, 30 years ago, he was on that dais. We've just lost him this year. And looking at old documents, we are created by ordinance of Pierce County. And some of you might remember Ed McGuire as a staff person who worked here as well. To look back at the history of the idea that conflict, addressing it, might actually improve relationships, was what motivated both the county council, the legal community, the courts, and community activists. Carl Anderson, Daisy Stallworth, these are names that you might remember from, from the olden days. I'm honored to have been at the institution and actually deal with almost each one of you to look for ways that we can meet what our community needs. And so I wanted to thank the support that you all have given. And I'm here to give you a little bit of a sense of, I was told very loud and clear by almost every single council member, not all of the ones are here, about three years ago, can you please go talk to the state? We're doing what we can as the county to support you. Let's talk about the state. And I'm here to report that the state is helping. We've gone from a staff of four to a staff of 11. We're still working on rebuilding our volunteers of 100 media, 100 medias who volunteer their time, and we're doing consulting services in the community. So as we grow back and figure out how we can go deep, way beyond the eviction resolution stuff that overwhelmed us for a while, of really meeting, getting out of Tacoma into the community is really the goal. And so I think that's something you and I have talked with, council member, of how to get out. We were out at Gig Harbor yesterday. Gig Harbor also had their preparation time. And so I wanted to compliment you all on modeling good conflict resolution. You ready, how you solved conflict without realizing it? Internationally, October 17th, that means the third Thursday of every October, is International Conflict Resolution Day. But since in Pierce County, it's the shakeout, we push that day to Saturday. See how well we resolve conflicts here with? And I just, I just want to thank you all for your commitment, for your, your really commitment to be able to make referrals to your constituents and finding creative ways that we're able to support the community. So it's a big, huge thank you. And in memory of those who came before, I think many of you, well, you and I knew Dennis very well. So we do our best to uphold their legacy and to create a new one with all of you in the next years to come. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership of this just super important community institution that helps resolve so many conflicts. Question, any comments by council members before we invite Ms. Hudkwan up here for a photo? Remarks for council members. Councilwoman Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Honored to read this, truly appreciate the work that your organization does, both those that are paid, but also the many volunteers that come in and get trained and supported and really try and work boots on the ground. It allows for a diverse set of voices to help with conflict resolution in our community, and they come with different walks of life. They sometimes look different than the people they may see in our court systems. They have the ability to sometimes communicate in different languages, which is incredibly important when you can do this work with people that basically become trusted mediators to help solve a problem. And so truly appreciate the, the level of excellence that you bring to this work in supporting people who just want to help solve problems before they escalate. And it really does pay off, saves, not only saves us tax dollars, but just helps people have healthier relationships. And sometimes having someone from the outside do that is all it takes. So thank you for doing that for us. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoover.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say how much I appreciate what you do as well. I admire you for your tenacity, your perseverance. You're always enthusiastic, and you're having to deal with so many personalities and issues. And I'm just glad you're hardwired for that. It's not something I find. And as enjoyable as you do. So anyway, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. My colleagues are absolutely right. And just reminding those who are listening in, the Center for Dialogue and Resolution offers trainings that folks can take, everyday folks can take, just to build a skill set to work with issues, help resolve issues as everyday people in our community. And you offer that to community members to take advantage of. I don't know, American culture or what it is, but so many folks, we seem to just avoid conflict and not, not, maybe we don't have the skills or we're just afraid of conflict. A conflict doesn't have to be big and dramatic and scary. It can actually, when worked through productively, actually make a relationship so much stronger. And getting rid of that, trying to clear through that conflict can just release so much emotional tension and energy and help, help folks just have, as Councilwoman Hitchen said, just have better ongoing relationships, whether they're interpersonal relationships, or business relationships, or professional relationships. So the, the work you do is so, so powerful, helping to build, have people. so, so powerful, helping to build, have people build these simple skills, relatively simple skills after, after taught them and to use in so many different applications. So thank you for what you do and being here in our community and helping people resolve conflict in a more peaceful way.
Thank you.
Could we invite you up for a photo, please?
Yes, and we do not have to get under a table. Do you like that one? Do you want me up on the?
Yes, please.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. You Fred. You got a dance party? Yes.
Good to see you. Take care.
I'll tell you, I saw you.
For sure, yeah.
And Michael as well. I don't know if you saw him this morning.
I only on screen, yeah.
Well, finally, under this section of our agenda, we do have a presentation. I'd like to welcome Darren Stavish and Anna Peterson from Pierce Transit to present on Pierce Transit's Destination 2045. It's the, our transit agency's long-range plan. Thank you for being here so that community members can also learn this important information and learn how they can give input to the agency, Pierce Transit, about its long-range plan.
Since it's baseball season, we got to have a program.
All right. I believe the gentleman over there's got, will be driving? Super. Thank you very much. And then any tricks as far as?
Just seeing next.
It's okay. If I change the height for you.
No, we're fine. We're fine.
You're doing most of the talking.
I didn't want to be going up and down. Can you hear, hear us all okay?
You will.
Okay. No, you don't have to go through anything.
I'm loud.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman, fellow council members, thank you very much for your interest and for inviting us today to present to you on our destination, all-new Destination 2045 Long Range Plan. I have with me the co-pilot of the plan, our new senior planner, Anna Peterson. And we want to kind of walk you through it and let you know where we are in the process. And then I'll open up briefly for questions at the end. If there are any next slide, please. So a few of the goals and objectives of this all-new long-range plan are provided here. We will go into them in more detail on the next slide. But one thing we really want to emphasize is none of this work is being done in a vacuum. We have a couple of, not only did we do our first long-range plan, all-new long-range plan, for the first time back in 2016, we did do a minor update in 2020. Unfortunately, we were right in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic and we're not able to do a lot of outreach. So most of that work was done either virtually or, or over the phone. Last year, we, in March, we completed our stream system expansion study, and that work is, is being fed into this as well. And then finally, at the end of last year, we completed our bus system recovery and restoration plan. So again, all of these are kind of like chapters in a bigger book, and we will be referring to those other documents as this plan is in the works and being developed. Next slide, please. These are on the handout that I gave you. There are six focus areas in the long-range plan that are depicted here. All six are directly, will directly support any of the four-year vision networks that we'll be reviewing with you for growth and expansion of our fixed route system. We'll talk about those in a minute and how you can access them. But I'd like to focus on the three that were, are in our control. We call them the three Bs lovingly, namely buses, base infrastructure, and bodies. And what we mean by bodies is the additional bus operators and journey-level mechanics that we would need to put these, these plans in motion. All are critical components of any proposed expansion, as you likely know. And of course, none of this is possible without additional funding. Our CEO, Mike Griffiths, likes to end any of his presentations saying that currently Pierce Transit is providing absolutely the most transit we can based on our financial constraints and our employee constraints. So we want to make sure that this is a blank canvas, and we will be showing you throughout the plan what it would take to, to grow at incremental levels. Again, it will be clearly called out in both our initial outreach that we're going through now and engagement efforts, as well as these presentations. We like to call it a fiscally-constrained vision, and that's actually an oxymoron. But what we mean by that is that all cost assumptions for any phase, any type of growth and development that we do, whether it's new base infrastructure, additional zero-emission vehicles, is all constrained. And we will be showing those cost estimate, estimations for the different growth scenarios over time. Next slide, please. We'll also look at emerging technologies. You know, one of the things, the, things are happening so fast. And remember that even four or five years ago, we were talking about, could you imagine if you could take your mobile handset and find out what time the bus was coming or actually use it to pay your fare? So things that seem very futuristic are happening fast and furious. Certainly, we don't feel that autonomous shuttles, micro mini-buses will be operating around town anytime soon. But we think that, we want to at least acknowledge other transit agencies, namely Jacksonville Transit Authority and Contra Costa. Jacksonville is going to be introducing their downtown shuttle, which is autonomous like this next summer. Contra Costa Transit in California is looking at it. For us, we think that there's an opportunity for places like Point Defiance Park. We've been asked, well, why can't you operate a bus that takes people from the parking lot to the zoo and the aquarium attractions? And really, a 40-foot bus wouldn't make any sense there. So we think that there's, there's at least an opportunity to look at nationwide best practices and call those out in the plan as well. This I want to have Anna talk a little bit about. It's the outreach that we've done today. And I've got some notes. If we'll take a look, too.
Okay, yeah. So we part of.
Next slide, please. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Next slide. Part of any good long-range plan is outreach. And so we have been actively trying to do outreach. We've been doing the traditional things. We've been meeting with the various jurisdictions in our area. We have been going to, we, we actually met with the planners, specifically the planners in the different jurisdictions in our areas and asked them questions. We showed them our proposed, we have four scenarios, which we're, we're going to get into in a few moments. But we showed them those proposed scenarios, asked some questions. Hey, are, are we, are we doing this right? Are we hitting the areas that you think people and jobs are going to go? We've been going to special events. We've had some open houses, and we've had a town hall. The, one of the most important things about our outreach, though, that I want to point out is we have been trying to do traditional outreach, and we've been trying to think outside the box and be a little more innovative. So we did three in-person open houses and one online open house via Zoom. We also are still doing what's called a Story Map, which is a self-guided open house. And so, little side note, I'm going to give you a plug for that because I want you by Friday to go online and look at our Story Map and give us some feedback. And that, that Story Map is going to go into a little bit more detail on what we're talking about now. But we have been trying to be at public events. We have gone to various community events. We've gone to farmer's market, things like that. And we are trying to learn from this. Our, our open houses, some of our open houses were great. We did an open house. We were, we were in downtown Tacoma. We were at a coffee shop, had a lot of people show up. It was great. We did an open house at our base, not so great. So we are adjusting, and we are adjusting and realizing that the world around us is changing. So we are trying to change with that world around us. So, you know, always, please let us know if there's someplace you think we should be, and we will be happy to be there. Yeah, is there anything I'm forgetting about our outreach?
Yeah, she talked about the Story Map, and that is available at pierstransit.org/longrangeplans, plural, which is also at the bottom of the fact sheet. And that's where the self-guided open house is available.
If you, there's a QR code on the fact sheet, too. If you don't want to type in our web address, you can just scan that.
Yeah, I think another thing, too, when we started our outreach and engagement was in July, we utilized something called Social Pinpoint. And it's an online mapping tool whereby people can actually pin comments throughout the service area as well as countywide to talk about where they're looking for growth and expansion. And we found that what we hear over and over again is a lot of the same. It's really late, later nights, earlier mornings. It doesn't seem like us, frequency is as important as knowing that the bus is coming very late, very early, as well as weekends. Most of our ridership, as you probably know, is about a four-and-a-half-mile trip, and we're a midday service. Really, it's, for many of our riders who are transit-dependent, or we learn over and over again through our surveys is that Pierce Transit is their only way to get around town. And, and midday is really our peaks, our 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, which is the exact opposite of a sound transit or peer system. So this is something, you know, we, we got 700 comments by comparison, and that was in Social Pinpoint in July. We did the same thing back in the, in 2020 for the Destination 2040 update and only received 163. So to Anna's point, we think that there are certain things that people are gravitating to, and the Social Pinpoint mapping exercise was really helpful. We will have all those comments made verbatim in our appendices. But this is something, this is just a, oh, I'm sorry, next slide. I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm doing this clicking and going, why isn't it? So I'm sorry. I should have slowed down. Been taking a look. This is a, a summary of really what we heard. And again, it's not really anything too different than what we've heard in the past as we presented on all of our plans. And again, we are, we just started our biennial customer satisfaction survey. So these types of things we find that we hear over and over again, especially what we heard when we completed our bus system recovery and restoration plan at the end of last year. All right, now, remember to say it. Next slide, partner coordination. I think we could talk about this together. Anna mentioned that in August, we met with all of our planning partners?
Yeah, we met with our planning partners, met with the planners. And like I said before, we, we sat down with them. We showed them the different growth scenarios for our fixed route transit. We asked them if they thought we were going in the right direction. We looked at the, the projections for population growth, employment growth, and we also looked at equity maps.
So wait, let me jump ahead. Next slide, please, because she's speaking to that now. Oh, perfect segue.
So, yeah, we, so this is an example of what we looked at. There's, this is an equity map with the, with transit overlaid on it. And this kind of tells you, shows you some examples of improvements that we're looking at. So we want to do focused improvements where job growth is forecast to be and with priority population areas. So those are kind of two of our top objectives.
If I may add, yeah, this is actually was before Anna joined us. In the summer of 23, we started with Pierce County. And back then, we were working with Erica Red Hunt and Angie Drum. We have since gravitated and recently working with Mike Galizio, your new planning manager, your senior planner, Sean Phelps, Jessica Nappi, and others to make sure, again, that where we're looking at expanded or new routes or where the county foresees growth and development, we really call it the four pillars or peers. And it's as simple as 2044 projections for population, employment, housing. And then the fourth pillar is equity populations, which is also known as the transit propensity indices that were developed by the University of South Florida. And what those are is taking the things that generate, it's, it's really looking at communities that most rely on transit, whether it's BIPOC populations, low-income, people that might have zero or one car at home, veterans, and the disabled. And there's multiple indices that are looked at. So we want to make sure that we're utilizing these four pillars as we project and, and expand and show where we feel that the growth belongs. And really, again, making sure that we have buy-in from all our municipal partners, as well as your, your Pierce County planners. And I think it's, it's been an iterative process, and we've learned a lot. Next slide, please. So the kind of, this is the, what I call the wow factor. It's, I think it's the most exciting and interesting element of the Destination 2045 Long Range Plan. And these are available on the social, excuse me, the.
Story map.
Story map. In case they, so, but Story Map Now, which is a self-guided open house online. And we did show these at our four open house events for the first time a couple of weeks ago, as well as our virtual open house. They're based on gradual increases in annual service hours at approximately 20% more, and that's for scenario A. 30% more is our scenario B. 50% more approximately is our scenario C. And by that time, it's really a show, open, go system. What I mean by that is you don't need a schedule. The bus runs all day, every day throughout the system. And then scenario D is, is really the, to me, the, the most exciting. And that, and that goes back to serving the entire county. And in your case, especially in areas that, where there's been a lot of growth and development that opted out back in 2012, you'll see cities being reintroduced. Again, they would have to vote themselves in through taxation. So it's not something that we can just say, hey, we're going back to Orting or Bonnie Lake or South Hill or someplace like that. But we want to make sure that we, we identify and recognize the parts of the county where growth and development are the strongest or, or the, the highest projected. And, and really there, you know, we, we understand that there are some transit deserts, and we hope that over time, my dream as, as a long-range planner would be just to see that happen someday sooner rather than later. And I think, again, you know, I, we won't show these maps because we'd like you to spend some time digging in, using the Story Map. You can see before and after. So there's actually a slide tool, so you can see what the system looks like today, and then slide over. And kudos to Anna and a woman in our community development team named Rachel Holtzhauser, who found this, this product. And I'm, I think it's pretty exciting. Next slide, please. So these are some hypothetical questions that, since you have not seen the different scenarios, you can't answer them. But we will hope that as you do take a look at them. Anna mentioned that we're closing the survey on Friday, and that's only because we need to summarize or synthesize the, what we heard as part of our draft plan, which will be coming out at the end of November. But the open house itself will be open indefinitely. So even if you don't, and don't have time to comment, we would certainly take direct comments as well if any of you chose, or if the council chose to comment as a whole. But we just want to make sure, again, and I think we've mentioned this a couple of times, so forgive me if I'm repeating myself, we want to make sure that we are showing growth in transit, whether it's expansion, new routes, longer routes, bus rapid transit. We certainly, as part of the stream system expansion study, we recognize that our, our number one route, of course, which is coincidentally is our Route 1, Down Pacific Avenue, SR7, that project is being redesigned. We also want to look again, ideally next year, at Routes 2 and 3, because as part of our stream system expansion study, coincidentally, our 1, 2, and 3 are our most utilized routes, and we still think those are the three best candidates for bus rapid transit. The last thing I'll mention, too, that you'll see in the presentation through Story Map is something called a fast, frequent, and reliable network. And we really, our, our top 10 routes are our top 10 year after year. So for the other seven routes, we, when I, I like to say, show them a little love. And what I mean by that is really, really advance the route. And how we can do that is through signal prioritization, transit signal prioritization. So make it much more travel time competitive with an automobile, as well as offering some of the things that we're going to be doing very soon in the Stream Enhanced Bus Quarter. And that's real-time arrival information, perhaps, something that really enhances the, the passenger experience. You know, a better quality shelter, certainly perhaps a push-to-talk. And Tina Lee is here, and I forgot the name of that device whereby it tells you the next bus is coming if you're. Thank you. I should have written that down. So it's, it's exciting things. And again, it's something that really enhances this route, and doing it much quicker and much less, or much more cost-effective than the 10 to 30 million a mile that you need for, for a true bus rapid transit. So that's an exciting thing. And you will see, it's called Fast, Frequent, and Reliable Network in this plan. It's something that actually we stole from our friends in King County Metro up the road. So, but I think it's a great way to, to really advance, again, routes that are high performers for us year after year after year.
We didn't steal it. We were inspired.
We were inspired. We didn't poach. I'm poaching again. So next slide, please. With that, this is also on the back of your, your handout, kind of showing where we are in the process. We're just, as, as we mentioned, finishing up the, the public outreach and involvement process. We're about halfway through these individual presentations to our city councils. Our, there's 13 in total, plus, plus you all. And we will have a draft plan available, the first draft plan available at the end of November for your reading enjoyment over the Christmas holiday. And then that will complete in the middle of January. And then by then, we will, we'll take it to our board for comments and then kind of clean that up and then come out again with, with another plan, a second draft. Our goal is to adopt in April at our Board of Commissioners. And with that, I think, unless I.
I also just want to highlight, I know you all are going to get on and look at the Story Map and make comments there. Yeah. But in case you're too busy practicing diving under the table tomorrow, and you had planned to do it tomorrow, when the draft comes out, you will have additional opportunities.
That's a good point.
To comment. And the draft is going to go over more than just those four fixed route scenarios. So there'll be, there'll be more going on. So you might want, just want to get ahead on your homework and get on the Story Map and check it out.
So with that, we're going to roll off our questions. We certainly appreciate the invitation and your time and your interest in our, our future.
Well, thank you for briefing us, and thank you for providing tools for us to understand what is in the long-range plan and interactive tools for the public to also engage. And as a reminder, council members and the public can go to pierstransit.org/longrangeplans, plural, slash longrangeplans, and find that material and find ways to give input. Do any council members have any remarks or questions at this time? Councilor Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. One is just, can you kind of give me a little bit more information about how you're engaging with communities that are outside of the Pierce Transit area? If they're not inside the Pierce Transit area, they might not give you feedback, and you, it looks like some of your plans are outside the transit area. So I think having their feedback now could really help.
Yes, not, I wouldn't say proactively or aggressively, but certainly in talking to the GMCC and the Pierce County. to the GMCC and the Pierce County Regional Council, those partners are on, and we're making sure that they know that we're in. But it's kind of a, it's tough for us because I couldn't go to them, you know, one-on-one and say, let me give you a presentation on a system that you don't have. But we certainly have made sure, we haven't hidden it from anybody, and we have made sure that when on any of these meetings where we know that other cities, that all Pierce County cities are there and have participants, again, GMCC and the Pierce County Regional Council come to mind, we make sure that we are announcing that the plan is available. Does that answer your question? So it's not as proactive or as aggressive, but not hiding from it either.
Okay. I just think it would be helpful to kind of know their thoughts and feedback if you're trying to think about, like, what the next steps might be.
The other thing is when we go to community events and also things that are online, we are tracking whether or not the people are, whether or not the comments are coming from people within our service area or not. And we can tell that because we ask people what their zip code is. So, and we're not turning away those comments, and we're not ignoring those comments. They are important, yeah.
Because it wasn't our first survey. We have a trick. We just say, what's your zip code? And then we know if they're in or out.
Okay.
We also ask them, do you ride or not? Did you ride it this year?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my second question, within my district, just looking at Scenario D, I didn't see DuPont listed as one of the areas that you were expanding. And I just, I definitely will go on and probably give you some comments on that. They've been zoned on our, on our plans, high-capacity transit, and they don't have transit, everybody. And they have sound transit, but that's it. So nobody can get to it if they don't. So I think they would probably want to say, hey, what about us? So
We'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Like I said, we do learn from those that we present to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Denson.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. You asked a couple of the questions that I was going to ask. Thank you all for being here. This is really exciting. I hear a lot about the want for more transit in my district. I'm District 7, so North Tacoma, West Tacoma, they're good. I'm sure they all always like expanded schedules, as you described, but I also have Gig Harbor and the Key Peninsula, most of which is not served by transit. I want to thank you for the Gig Harbor Runner. I'm hearing really good things. I hope participation is good, but I'm seeing people talking about it on Facebook and saying how easy it is and how people used it for this and that. And I think that that will encourage more people to give it a try. I also want to thank you guys for finally going by Tacoma Community College and Gig Harbor, because we had kids doing running start who had to walk a long way from the nearest bus stop. So that was really, really, really appreciated. Similar to Councilmember Hitchens, on, under Scenario D, I don't see the greater Gig Harbor area or Key Peninsula on here. I know we're not a high-growth area, we're not a high-capacity transit area. However, we were one of the areas that was drawn out in 2017. And it is a key issue that I hear from all demographics, young, especially young, older, older folks as well, all income levels. They aren't expecting the world, they aren't expecting rapid transit, but they would appreciate anything. And so I would love to have, love, love, love to have them included on that. And one of the questions I had, even though we love the whole range of services that you all provide so well, but is it ever possible, if we can't get everything, could we get the shuttle? I mean, I've got disabled folks who literally live a couple of blocks away from the transit guidelines that, I mean, they can walk and call from there, but sometimes they can't walk. Can you, do you ever think about providing a larger jurisdiction for, for the shuttle to help with, help with folks with disabilities? Or the runner would also be great. I'm basically, we'll take anything.
And if I called our planning manager to the podium?
Of course.
She knows these and can answer these much better than I can. I'd be just going, Tina, Tina, Tina.
Trying to think creatively about how we could get transportation to the Key Peninsula.
My name is Tina Lee, I'm Pierce Transit's Planning Manager, so thank you. As you were saying that, I'm immediately going to Runner
Right.
and Para Transit. So Para Transit is our complementary ADA services for individuals who are not able to ride our fixed route. We operate at the same time of day as our fixed route, three-quarters of a mile around a service. We adhere to a very strict FTA and ADA requirement on that. Part of that is the, the cost to operate that service. And given our resources to fund all of the services that we are, we are operating, we really try to not go beyond that. So Runner, I think, is the way to provide that type of connection, because Runner also has to be ADA accessible.
Okay.
And we always make sure that there's a Para Transit vehicle. And as Darren was answering the question, one of the things that you don't see on these maps is those Runner boundaries. So where it exists, we don't see it. And if there are areas that the community is asking us to add, we should show that too in that next round. So that might be the solution in that area. The challenge will be funding it in an area that is not contributing to the district, because we're always asked for more service. And a really hard way for us to provide that service is not to say Gig Harbor or unincorporated Pierce County in the Key Peninsula is asking for service, but it's Silicon that is going to fund that service, because they are contributing. So that is our, that is our challenge, and we're always asking if an area that is not in our boundary is asking for service, what kind of partnerships can we have? Can we contract and find a way to fund it if it's not an area that's already contributing to the district? So that, that might be the conversation also that we should have, especially if Key Peninsula is really interested. I know they had mustard seed and some other programs, and maybe that didn't give enough service, or even Beyond the Borders, if those aren't meeting all those needs.
We don't have Beyond the Borders, and mustard seed is wonderful, but they have very specific populations. I would be happy to have those conversations, and I am 100% certain we can find the funding if it's
Even a pilot.
Yeah. Well, we actually put $600,000 into rural transportation programs.
Yep.
The RFP went out. I don't know if you guys
Saw that, yes, we were trapped in that.
Applied. So Key Peninsula is one area, and then Councilmember Herrera and Councilmember Morrell also have areas. I mean, there's an example of a funding source that we could have given to Pierce Transit. I mean, you guys have the expertise, and it's nice to be able to link people into the rest of your roots. But yeah, if there's a possibility, I'm sure we can find the money.
Okay.
Not necessarily from the county, but through some of these other partners that we have out there.
How about I reach out to you afterwards?
Let's do it.
And we can keep talking and figure out if there's a way to test it and see how well it's received.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Denson, I'm surprised you didn't bring up wanting to make sure the new PennMet Parks Recreation Center
It was on my list, I forgot.
She'll follow up. She has another major stop location for a major new recreation center coming online in the PennMet Parks area. Councilwoman Morrell.
Thank you. Since Councilmember Denson got on the, got on the bus, I'm going to talk about, you know, one of the challenges that we have up in the Frederickson area. It's not my area, but I just think it's kind of crazy that you've got two major routes separated by a three-mile strip going to one of the largest employment centers in Pierce County, and you can't connect the two. You can't connect Highway 7 to Meridian because it's outside the area.
I think you'll be pleasantly surprised when you take a look at the map. There's actually three new routes serving south-central Pierce County, including the kind of the no-man's land, the area that opted out in 2012.
Yeah.
So there's a direct connection from South Hill to Spanaway, a brand-new route. We recognize, we gone down there, we went down there with the Kern County Executive, and I understand he took it to, and he couldn't believe all the development around there, around Canyon Road, and said, this is, this is a transit desert. So we're well aware of that.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You'll be very pleasantly surprised.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other remarks? Well, thank you again for sharing. Again, council members and members of the public can go to pierstransit.org/longrangeplans to give, to give more input and find those resources. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
That concludes that section of our meeting. We're at Section 8 Resolutions. Vice President Campbell, can we test your microphone, see if the broadband connection is?
Are you hearing me okay?
Yes, we are. Vice President Campbell, we're at Resolution 2024-212. Are you able to make a motion?
I would like to move Resolution 2024-212.
It's been properly moved and suggested that we adopt Resolution 2024-212. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal Number R 2024-212, a resolution of the Pierce County Council approving the 2024 through 2025 funding recommendations of the Pierce County Human Services Department for farmers' markets.
Thank you. Mr. Bokey, debrief the council.
Thank you, Chair Mello. The council appropriated $200,000 in ordinance number 202344S2 to fund farmers' markets in Pierce County. That was in the general fund and miscellaneous current expense. The Human Services Department was directed to allocate funds on a competitive basis through a request-for-proposal process with priority given to organizations that can serve communities or neighborhoods that currently lack a farmer's market or are experiencing food insecurity. The department released a request for proposal on June 21, 2024. Four organizations applied for funding. The request totaled $673,300. A three-member application evaluation committee reviewed and scored the proposal. Scores ranged from 33 to 48 on a 50-point scale. The funding recommendations are Bonny Lake Community Resources, $150,000, and Food Backpacks for Kids for $50,000. The scoring and the details are listed in Exhibit A to the resolution, and there are, there's additional information there. This was given a due pass recommendation at the October 7, 2024 Rules and Operations Committee meeting, and Ms. Patty Spalding-Clewain from our Human Services Department is here in chambers to speak to this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Spalding-Clewain, anything to add on behalf of the department?
No.
Well, thank you for being here to answer our questions in case we do. For those listening at home, the answer was no from the department at this time. Questions or comments by council members before we open up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. This is a public hearing on Resolution 2024-212 related for funding for farmers' markets. Any member of the public wish to provide comments, starting here in council chambers? Not seeing anybody come to the podium. Let's move to the Zoom room. Mr. Dominique.
For any member of the public that'd like to provide a comment on Proposal Number R 2024-212, please press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star 9 on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
With no hands, we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members?
Chair, we just had one hand, if you want to
Absolutely. Let's go back to the public hearing in the Zoom room.
Okay. We have Zeta Woodworth. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much for hearing me. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the county for supporting these farmers' markets in areas where food security is high and where access is low. Your consideration for funding Food Backpacks for Kids and a farmer's market is huge for us. It's a huge complement to what we're doing. We recently did a family survey, asking the families we serve for our food bank what we do best. And their response was the farm fresh food, as we've been growing our own food and working with local farmers. To get that produce into the bank, it's opened up the children's ability to get food onto the tables and do family meals in a way they wouldn't otherwise be able to. And involving the kids we serve at the farms, it's been fantastic. And so to have the opportunity to develop this into a farm stand and farmer's market to better serve our community is huge. So thank you very much.
Anyone else, Mr. Dominique?
I'm not seeing any more at this time, Chair.
With no more hands, we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council member? I actually do have one question. Ms. Spalding-Clewain, I'm sorry for not connecting with you before this. In the exhibit to the resolution, again, as indicated by staff, this authorizes funding to Bonny Lake Community Resources and Food Backpacks for Kids, two great organizations in our community resourcing really underserved communities. In the exhibit, it says the proposed number of households to be served. And for Bonny Lake Community Resources, it says 82,000 proposed households. And for Food Backpacks for Kids, it says 42,000 households. Are those, are those, you know, and it's fine, you know, likely duplicated, but are those like real households that they're going to serve or that are in their catchment area?
I believe that it would be duplicated households, the number of units that would be coming and utilizing those services. And the proposed number of households was based on the total award of $200,000, understanding that the Bonny Lake Community Resources really is an on-demand farmer's market with their food lockers, which would be in conjunction with the food bank options that they have available. So it's expanding that. And then Food Backpacks for Kids is for their pavilion, for their farmer's, farmer's market pavilion, which they did in their application, call out the number of residents that access the food banks and the pavilions, so.
That's an astounding amount of households to serve with these limited dollars. Thanks.
Well, they remember that these would be leveraging their existing dollars, so it's not, these would not be new households or new services they're leveraging.
Makes sense. And it also makes sense that many of these would be duplicated. Many folks rely on this food bank system, this food security system in order to meet their needs for
Certainly.
many months. It's not just a one-time visit, and they're good to go.
Correct. We did not ask for unduplicated numbers.
Right. That makes sense. Vice President Campbell.
Thank you, Chair, and I want to thank Ms. Woodworth for her comments and the work that she does with the Food Backpacks for Kids. It's an incredible part of our food insecurity network. This is the first of three proposals we're going to consider here in a row, so I'm just going to make kind of some of my comments about all of it. We've had an issue with food insecurity in Pierce County for quite some time. Really became more apparent during the pandemic that our network wasn't as flexible or responsive as it could be. And so what you're seeing coming forward in this proposal and the next two that we'll be considering is really a way to strengthen our food insecurity network from all sides, be it Food Backpacks that are being delivered to kids or to families around the community, investing in the capital expenses. So we're investing to strengthen our food banks so they can do it more efficiently, or making sure we have the resources so that they have the food on hand at the time of need. And I want to thank all the council members for support of these programs over the last few years, as we've really focused on, it's been something that's been very important to me, is closing those gaps in food insecurity. And what we're seeing today is the outcome of a lot of that work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other remarks? Councilwoman Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to follow up on Councilmember Campbell's comments, Councilmember Campbell has done a great job supporting our food network and has always been an advocate of helping people in need, especially with food insecurities. And we've all heard his line about farmers' markets. So there again, I think this is kind of turning a corner, an innovation that the department's been looking for as far as using the locker program as a way to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And also, it is not just Bonny Lake anymore or the East Plateau. I think we're close to agreements, thanks to Congresswoman Strickland, to put it into some of our colleges, both Bates and Pierce College, which will open up a whole new area. I know that Congresswoman Schreier has invested into these. open up a whole new area. I know that Congresswoman Schreier has invested into these lockers, and we're going to have two more lockers open up in the next two, two weeks. So, this is kind of where innovation collides with economic development and the ability for farmers to have a farmer's market without showing up to a farmer's market, that they can move their produce, their product, and eventually other items that'll be used through this locker program, that people can go online and order your bracelet, your necklace, your earrings, your whatever. And so these lockers, I think, are going to be really interesting to watch how they develop. And I appreciate the council for supporting those efforts, taking an idea from a concept to where it is today. And I thank the Good Roots Northwest for what they do and constantly looking at new ways to serve the public at large. And so I thank you for seeing that as it is. And I just will always look for good things to happen within this area, especially with farmer's markets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other remarks? With no further remarks, the vote is on adoption of proposal number R 2024-212. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crover?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. We're at Resolution 2024-213. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R 2024-213.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2024-213. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Proposal number R 2024-213, a resolution of the Pierce County Council approving the 2024 through 2025 funding recommendations of the Pierce County Human Services Department for equipment and capital needs of food banks.
Thank you. Mr. Bookie to brief the council.
Thank you, Chair Mello. The council appropriated $400,000 in the general fund in ordinance 2023-44S2, which was the biennial budget, to fund equipment and capital needs for food banks and food insecurity programs serving Pierce County. The funds were to be allocated on a competitive basis with priority given to organizations that have old equipment that puts food at risk of spoilage or energy inefficient equipment, or assets or investments will reduce operating costs. allocations were not to exceed $25,000 per location of the equipment or assets. Human Services Department released a request for proposal on June 21st, 2024. Eighteen applications were received from 14 organizations for a total of $487,934. The applications were scored on a 50-point scale. The scoring ran from 40 to 49, and the recommended amounts run from $4,634 to $25,000 to all 14 organizations. And those explanations and the scoring can be found in Exhibit A. This was given a due pass recommendation at the October 7th Rules and Operations Committee meeting, and Ms. Spalding-Loon from our Human Services Department is here to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. Bookie. Ms. Spalding-Loon, anything to add on behalf of the Human Services Department?
No.
Thank you for being here. Any council, council members have any questions before we open up for a public hearing? Not seeing any. This is a public hearing on Resolution 2024-213. Any member of the public wish to provide comment on this resolution? We'll invite you to the podium, starting here in chambers. Not seeing anybody. Mr. Dominique, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any member of the public that'd like to provide a comment on proposal number R 2024-213, please press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And we have one hand at this time. First name Joyce, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Joyce, we see that you're still muted. Are you able to unmute yourself?
There. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm Joyce Schultz from the Gig Harbor Senior Center. I'd like to thank all those involved for the full funding of what we requested for the capital equipment. This equipment will be so instrumental to the Gig Harbor Senior Center, both currently and in the future. It will make the cooking and serving of our lunch program more efficient and more healthy, safely. It will increase available space for refrigeration, which we're lacking at the moment. As many of you might know, senior lunches are really important to the folks because they encourage socialization, gives them a reason to congregate, and it provides a nutritious meal, which may be their only nutritious meal of the day. A lot of them eat like bachelors, you know. So, anyway, I just want to thank, thank you, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see no more hands at this time, Chair.
With no other hands, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members?
Well, we did review this in committee, and as indicated, this helps many, many different community-based organizations really improve their ability to serve folks all year round and grow their capacity to keep food fresh longer and, and supply it to more people. So, this is a great use of public resources to be able to do just that. So, thank you to the department's help in supporting it and all these community-based organizations who do the real work on the ground.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2024-213?
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crover?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. We have Resolution 2024-214 before us. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion, please.
Thank you. I move Resolution R 2024-214.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2024-214. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R 2024-214, a resolution of the Pierce County Council approving the 2024 through 2025 funding recommendation of the Human Services Department related to food insecurity.
Thank you. Mr. Bookie.
Thank you, Chair Mello. This is, the council appropriated $1,350,000 of American Rescue Plan Act, and ARPA funds in ordinance number 2023-44S2, which is the biennial budget, to address food insecurity. The, there was a proviso attached to this, and the accompanying proviso stated that the funds shall be used for the Human Services Department to contract with a, a nonprofit entity to organize and distribute nutritious food and meals to individuals and families experiencing food insecurity. Nine entities applied for the funds. The amounts requested ran from $28,500 to $1,350,000. The scoring was done on a scale with a 50-point maximum. The scores ranged from 21.6 to 48.3. The highest scoring organization was the Emergency Food Network, and that is who the department is recommending receive all the funding. And the scores and whatnot are in Exhibit A. This was given a due pass recommendation at the October 7th, 2024 Rules and Operations Committee meeting, and Ms. Patty Spalding-Loon from our Human Services Department is here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Ms. Spalding-Loon, anything to add on behalf of the department?
That the, the need for food in our community is remarkable, and just wanted to state that all nine of the entities that applied, all were asking for funds specifically to purchase foods because they do not get enough in donations in order to meet the needs of their communities. So, just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments before we open up for a public hearing? Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just a quick question that I think I, I heard the answer to, but I had one of the applicants reach out wanting to know who they could talk to. They were, they were unsuccessful, wanting to know if they could get some feedback on their grant application, and I think you're the person.
I am.
But I also think I heard the answer that the proviso said, and, like, one entity. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it makes sense. And Emergency Food Network is amazing, and they, they serve the entire county, so that totally makes sense. So, I think I've got the answer I can give them, but I will have them reach out if, if they have any other questions. I think they're a new applicant to the county, too, so you might be able to give them some advice.
Notifications will be sent out this evening at 5:00 with information, letters of acceptance, of denial, and ways to connect, and my information is in that email.
All right. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Chair.
Mr. Bookie.
Ms. Spalding-Loon made, made mention of the total need. I did not. If you totaled up Exhibit A, the total requests were in excess of $3 million, $3.1 million, so.
Thank you for pointing that out. And all of this, again, is for the purchase of food, not for any other service or program, but, or need, but to purchase food. Thank you.
Well, this is a public hearing on Resolution 2024-214. Any member of the public wish to provide comment, starting here in council chambers? Not seeing anybody come to the podium. Mr. Dominique, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any member of the public that'd like to provide a comment on proposal number R 2024-214, please press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. There are no hands at this time, Chair.
With no hands, we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I want to start with a thank you to Vice Chair Campbell for leading on food in our county. And many of us are working in our communities to make sure people have access to food. And as the need continues to grow, was not the thought process many years ago when we started investing in food as a county, even before I was elected to this seat. The second part is a thanks to the Human Services Department. We put some provisos in the budget that really was looking to find ways to help support, but also buy food and also grow in some specific ways. And I think that your team who put together the RFPs and, and got it out there, we've got some, between all three of them, got some really dynamic programs, including some investments that are going to pay off in those communities long after we are done with this. And I think the third thing is just hats off to the EFN for being willing to partner with so many different agencies. Several, I think, if I was looking at the list, and I don't know it by heart, but several of the agencies that were, that applied for food themselves will be receiving food through EFN. And that's one of the reasons when the proviso language was originally written, we were looking for one entity because it's far cheaper to buy in bulk, store, and distribute as needed by these smaller agencies and to do that work. So, I think this is an efficient way to get the biggest bang for our buck and get food out across the county because of the networks. And we were looking for an agency to do that work. So, appreciate their leadership and willingness to step up and fill that role in our county. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, and thanks again, Chair. Again, so proud to be bringing this forward. As I review this, this is spending that we're doing on a biannual process. I mean, we allocated these funds about 11 months ago, just now getting around to getting the, the contracts up for us to get this out, and therefore the 24, 25. But the need and the hunger in our county and the, the need for food doesn't come around every two years. And so we need to find a way to be more sustainable, not only in creating some consistent funding just to buy that basic food to, to stock the shelves, but also innovative in the other programs we have with Backpacks for Kids, or just sometimes helping the food banks repair their refrigerators or add new shelving to make them more safe and efficient. And so, my hope is that this is more than just something we do every two years, but rather something that the community can come to count on Pierce County, to do that which, as public servants were called to the most, first and foremost, feed the hungry. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. As was indicated, thank you, Councilmember Campbell, for your leadership in this space. You've spent a lot of time helping us think about what the most strategic approach was to get at food insecurity. So, thank you very much for bearing down on this. And this one in particular, this is an efficient way to deliver this service. The, our county staff can do one contract with Emergency Food Network instead of dozens, and Emergency Food Network will work with dozens. So, thank you to department staff for implementing the vision in our, in our budget here. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2024-214?
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Crover?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The results of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. We're on to Section 9 ordinances. We have ordinance 2024-552 before us. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move proposal number O 2024-552.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2024-552. Madam Clerk?
Proposal number O 2024-552, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council vacating a portion of 100th Street East, lying in Government Lot 3 and the South East Quarter, Northwest Quarter, Section 6, Township 19 North, Range 4 East of the Willamette Meridian in Pierce County, Washington.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, good evening.
Evening. Thank you, Chair Mello, members of the council. Before you this evening is proposed ordinance number O 2024-552, which is in response to a citizen's petition to vacate an undeveloped portion of 100th Street East. The right-of-way, it, it's near the area of Canyon Road and 104th area, right in there. It's in the mid-county community planning area. We do have both kind of a, an aerial view and, and a, a better kind of location map on pages 67 and 68 of your packet, kind of get you the ability to place this in the county. The county engineer reviewed this application and determined, one, that the right-of-way segment is not needed for the county's roadway system, and two, it is in the best interest of the public to grant the proposed vacation. Planning and public work staff also in their review to determine that this is what's called a type NE right-of-way, meaning that the property is not tax-titled and that there is no evidence that public monies have been expended in, in, you know, the acquisition or the maintenance of this right-of-way. Therefore, the applicants are not required to pay the appraised value, as we've seen with other roadway vacations, that, that requirement does not apply to this one. There is a $1,500 application fee that has been paid, and that is, the, the receipt of that is also included in your packet. An equity analysis has been completed that has also been included in your packet, and a public hearing was held in EIDC on September 24th where this proposal did receive a due pass recommendation. Some highlights from the discussion in the committee. Both neighboring parcels are zoned rural separator and have a single-family land use code attached to them. The, the owners of the other parcel are signatories on the petition that is in your packet, so it's what the applicant, the two bordering properties are, the applicant and the, the signatories on the petition. And as was asked in committee, I, I am in, I am in no way related to the Mr. Swanson, who is the applicant of this. We've never met, not related, don't, don't know them. With that, With that, Mr. Chair, we have myself and Mr. Oniski from Planning and Public Works is on the call. We are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Oniski, anything to add on behalf of the Planning and Public Works Department?
No, not today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for being available for questions. Are there questions by council members before we open up for a public hearing? Seeing no questions, this is a public hearing on ordinance 2024-552. Any member of the public wish to provide comment on this ordinance, starting here in council chambers? Not seeing anybody come to the podium. Mr. Dominique, anybody in the Zoom room?
For any member of the public who would like to provide a comment on proposal number O 2024-552, please press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star 9 on your telephone keypad. And we have one hand at this time, phone number ending in 075. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Roxy Giddings. I was remembering that when we did the Parkland-Spanaway Midland Plan, that we like to have these rights-of-way open between places where they have like a fenced bunch of houses and they're all, you know, there's no way for the kids to walk through between these. And, I mean, I don't see this as a problem here right now, but I think that people should be aware of the fact that children need to be able to walk through these communities without having to go out to the road, walk around to catch a bus. And that has happened here in Parkland, and it's a problem because you don't always have real convenient ways for the school buses to get into these communities. And so I just, I really don't like to close off these things for people because they are public, and there's a reason why they were put there in the first place. So anyhow, I just want people to kind of keep that kind of stuff in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Giddings.
We have another hand, last name Swanon. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, yeah, my name is Mason Swanson. I'm watching the, this thing right now. I'm actually one of the people petitioning for it, and I just wanted to comment on what the lady just said about the school bus. All the school buses are, you know, on the main street, oh, that's my baby right there. All the school buses are on the main street, and there will be no access needed from this right-of-way. This right-of-way is just very heavily, or, yeah, right-of-way is very heavily grown into me and my neighboring property, which my neighbors share. That's kind of why we, you know, we're hoping to get this done, just because sticker bushes and all types of stuff that has compiled over on that lot for years is kind of spilling into our lots. We just like to maintain it. Everyone in this neighborhood takes a great care of their yards and takes, you know, a lot of care and taking care of stuff. So that's kind of why, I just kind of want to get on here and say the reason why we did petition the county for this. So thank you, guys, for going over this, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for being with us.
We have no more hands at this time, Chair.
With no hands, we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Now, seeing any, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2024-552?
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Excused.
Councilmember Crover?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. We're at Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that is of significance to or affecting Pierce County government and that did not appear for final action on today's agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. Please state your name if you would like it on the record and address all your comments to the chair. We'll start with those in council chambers. Please come to the podium. Welcome, thanks for being here and your patience through the other business we had today.
Thank you. My name, oh, Mr. Chairman, my name is Mary Phelps. My husband, Frank, and our three kids moved to land that we had purchased on 222nd Street in Graham in 1977. There were homes at the top of the land, top of the road, and then a wide-open space with open fields on both the north and south sides, and it then went into the trees. The open fields were referred to as the wetlands, but the land on the north side was used as a hay field, and our daughter was able to ride her horse on it, and it was a place for the kids to play after the hay was cut. Every rainy season, the road would have water across it where there was a culvert that went from the north side to the south, but you knew that there was a creek that ran through the open space. There were ditches that ran down both sides of the road because there was a creek that went under the road at the base, at the top of the hill, at the west end, and formed a pond. The road was a county road at the top at 70th Street, down the hill and partway into the trees. It became a private road at the west corner of our property, past 80th Avenue, to the end of the road. It was a county road, but it was a gravel road, and the county kept the grass along the road edges through the open space cut. Over time, the flooding over the road became more frequent and wider. Then the year came when the water was so deep and wide that the mail lady could not go through it. The year, we thought maybe the issue was the ditches along the sides of the road needed to be cleaned, and so we contacted the county and were told that because it was classed as wetlands, that the EPA wouldn't let them clean the ditches because it would impact the wetlands. They did a flyover and said that the road could be raised and would be sealed, and so it was. When it was raised, it had a gradual slope that formed a V shape where the creek went under it so that the sides could flow down and go into the creek. Then the haying stopped after the tractor towing the hay equipment sank, and it took two tries to get it out, and the north field was found to be like a swamp. And the road flooding happened more often and was spreading to the east. More families have moved onto our end of 202nd and down 80th, so the flooding has become more of an issue, and the answer again was to raise the road. Now the flooding isn't just on the roadway, it is spreading into the private property on the east and west side of the north open area. It seems that the raising the road just built a longer dam, and they made the road flat. The only exit, oh.
You are, and you came all this way, and you're doing an excellent job of summarizing what's going on. We would love, I do have to be fair to everybody, as you can imagine.
Yeah, well, they're with me.
Great. If they want to continue your remarks, do they want to, does someone want to continue your remarks? We can also have your council member meet with you after the meeting so we can really understand the issue and work with you on it.
I'll let them finish.
That would be great. I'm, thank you, but we have to follow our rules here to be fair to everybody.
Was that 272nd? 252nd, 252nd of 70th Street?
Right, it's being worked on, we can discuss.
Sir, can you pick up where she left off? Or whatever you want to do, it's your time. And we're happy to accept this in writing, and we will follow up, but please proceed. Your name for the record, please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Keith Shackmuth, and I believe this is where we left off. Okay, all right. So I'd like to speak about flooding issues along 252nd Street East in Graham. I own 20 acres that spans the wetland east to west of, upstream of 252nd, and have owned the property for over 23 years. Historically, the property was a vegetable farm, then a hayfield, and was harvested using heavy equipment as late as the year 2000. The fields were dry and passable for six months of the year and walkable the rest of the year. Four acres of the land is a legacy forest with very large sickus, bruised cedar, and other riparian trees. The county purchased the property downstream of me in 2005. The subdivision plan indicates the county must maintain the drainage channel to its original design condition. To my knowledge, the county has never maintained the channel, and reed canary grass now plugs it, limiting water flow from my property. County maintenance personnel have indicated that Department of Fish and Wildlife won't allow them to remove the canary grass. This is not true. All it takes is a piece of paper in their possession while removing the vegetation, a brochure, hydraulic permit. The county has failed to clean the roadside ditches along 252nd Street for as long as I have owned the property, limiting water flow to the few culverts that do exist. During heavy storms, the wetland would flood, but the waters would recede within a few days. About 2016, flooding began to get worse, coinciding with the buildout of Grand Fur subdivision upstream of me. Then in 2018, when the county raised the elevation of a 600-foot section of 252nd Street to keep it from flooding, the flooding upstream properties got substantially worse immediately, and my property is now inundated 10 months or more of each year. I watched the county road crew dump truck after truck of road base for an entire afternoon. They had raised the level of the 252nd Street dam. The county has known about the need for substantially more culvert capacity under 252nd Street for 21 years. The issue is well documented in the Muck Creek Basin Plan. The county has also approved upstream developments without providing the needed drainage infrastructure. The new Bethel High School will finish impervious area development this winter, increasing the stormwater runoff held back by 252nd Street. Councilmember Crover has indicated that adequate culvert capacity might get installed in five years. In the meantime, I am stuck with considerable property damage. The inundation is killing all of the legacy forest trees, which have lived there within the wetland for hundreds of years. The inundation is high enough and long enough to even kill cottonwood, ash, and alder trees. It has damaged a bridge on my property and increased sedimentation within the waterways. There are low-lying septic systems at risk from higher groundwater levels.
Please finish your thought, sir.
Yeah, I'd just like that the county stop mandating private property owners to accept property damage because the county won't request or approve funding for the needed culverts and maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Thank you for being clear. And you're welcome to provide any written material to the clerks so that we have it for the record for follow-up if you want to. Anyone else for community forum? Welcome. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Mello. My name is Heather Toller. I live on 252nd Street, and we're also impacted by the flooding, and I just would simply like the county to install larger culverts. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, we know you're in the Zoom room. We're going to ask you, Mr. Swanson, to come back into chambers to support Councilmember Crover's constituents here to make sure we can do proper follow-up. So I'm just giving a signal to our staff who we know is listening into the Zoom room. Anyone else in council chambers? We'll move to the Zoom room soon. Do you wish to participate in community forum? Please, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Chairman Mello, my name is Mary Klein, and I'd like to comment on the flooding on 252nd Street. We're asking for four things for the county council today. First, that the county appropriate funding quickly to install the necessary culvert capacity to alleviate county creating flooding on the properties surrounding the wetlands. This was a priority capital improvement project identified in 2005 in the Muck Creek Basin Plan. To our knowledge, no request for funding has ever been submitted by District 3 for the budget. The county approved developments over the last 20 years along 224th Street have created substantially more stormwater than what existed when the plan called for substantially more culvert capacity, 10 times the culvert capacity. And the neighbors in this area have been complaining to the county for more than 10 years. It just goes nowhere. Second, I'd like the county to understand how detrimental the lack of culvert capacity is to the restoration of Muck Creek and the return of salmon to the waterway. There are dry sections of Muck Creek downstream which lack summer and fall flows to sustain the salmon. The county has impounded a 40-acre shallow lake on our property and others by not installing the necessary culverts. It also warms the water and it evaporates it, taking the water out of the water calculations for the stream. For two years, I've been discussing a large-scale restoration project with the Salmon Working Group. All of the partners agree that the number one step, the first thing that has to happen, Pierce County has to install the culvert capacity and lower the artificially high water levels. We can't restore the waterways or plant trees in the middle of a lake. Third, we're asking council to appoint a small group to work with the neighbors to quickly assess and understand the drainage problems and implement it. The basin plan points to the correct solution. You now need 10 to 20 times the amount of culvert capacity is what exists down there. Fourth, well, we really look forward to working with the county on this, but fourth, the county's new stance that has been told to me and Morse Wildlife Preserve, and I'll quote, "The problem is outside of the right-of-way. The county has done all the maintenance it can. The county can't do anything about the flooding, and it's out of our control," unquote. The culvert capacity under 252nd Street is a county responsibility in a county right-of-way. It is something the county can provide, and it is within the county's control. And saying otherwise is not factual, and it doesn't adhere to the physics and the math of how water moves downstream. There's more, there's a lot more, but we're asking for the county's help, and being told that we might possibly maybe get additional culverts installed in five years is not addressing the need for immediate relief from the flooding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. There's no other members of the public here in council chambers. Mr. Dominique, anybody in the Zoom room for community forum?
For any member of the public that would like to participate in community forum this evening, please press the raise hand icon in Zoom or star 9 on your telephone keypad. And we have two hands at this time. First, we will go to phone number ending in 874. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, Chairman Mello, can you and the rest of the council members hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, this is Thomas Witt, and I wanted to make a comment on behalf of the folks that just gave, you know, public comment regarding the flooding issue, and something I'd like to share with them for their benefit is, they said that because of all this new development, that the county was required to increase these culvert capacities, right, for to support this drainage issue. But what they need to know is, new development is required to maintain their stormwater runoff pre-developed conditions. So when I heard that lady talk about 10 times the size of culvert, increasing culvert capacities, I'm going, no, that's not correct. There's no reason to increase those capacities. If Pierce County and the Planning and Public Works, when they approved these developments, are holding developers to that requirement, and it is the law, last I heard it was. Anyway, I wanted to call tonight because I wanted to ask a quick question, Chairman Mello. It's something that's been kind of confusing to me, and I'm just hoping you could shed some light on this. The public, the oath of office that all elected officials take, yourself and all the council members, I believe it says you have to uphold the state law and the state constitution. And the Public Records Act, the PRA, is a state law. So when I bring Pierce County's failure to basically acknowledge and adhere to a state law to my elected leaders, and there's no action on their part, I'm just sharing my perspective on that. It's kind of confusing because as an elected official, in my, from my perspective, it obligates action on the part of the council because of your oath of office. Because, and that's just something that's been confusing for me, and I was hoping you might be able to shed some light on that. I'm also... I'm also respectfully requesting that Ms. Denson, um, provide me a name and an email address so I can address the following three issues. Police wore body camera recordings from the incident that occurred at our residence on October 2nd, 2022, which was that somebody, some entity, had influence over the Pierce County Sheriff's Department and sent them to our home to execute me. And the recording that I've been told had been destroyed will prove that. And here's a problem, and I'd like to address it. If they were destroyed, that's a felony. Nobody's been charged with a felony, nothing in the news Tribune on the front page. So I don't believe they were destroyed. They don't want me to see them. I would like Ms. Denson to provide me the contact, um, name and email address, who can assist with that. Also, I found on Pierce County's new Planning and Public Works website, there is a drainage easement on my neighbor's parcel, 0221182000. My neighbor is unaware of, has no knowledge of this easement. I followed up with the city of Gig Harbor, and they would be the only person that would require an easement.
Thank you, Mr. Wick.
Because of their drainage.
Thank you, Mr. Wick, your time's expired.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next we have Danielle. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Danielle Pestimer, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Chairman Mellow, if I may, I would also like to comment on the flooding problems at 252nd Street in Graham. The flooding has been going on since before my family and I moved here in August of 2021. Uh, the McCabe family owned the property before we did, and they made complaints to the county council about the flooding problems for about six years. So it's my understanding this is not a new problem. Uh, the lack of culvert capacity under 252nd Street is severely slowing North Branch Muck Creek from exiting the wetlands. The creek backs up from the road through the county-owned property and into our property. The problems for us include potential of artificially raised groundwater backing into our, the bottom of our septic drain fields. We haven't had any septic problems yet, but we did just replace the system. And there's a very real possibility that we could be dealing with septic issues in the very near future. We are not the only property that is dealing with a low-lying septic system and drain field. Um, the groundwater level has risen so far already that it's killing most of the trees east of the wetlands or into private property. The FEMA flood maps were revised for the area. Old maps were before road culvert collapse, and the new maps are after the county raised 252nd Street in 2020. The difference on our property is stark. Uh, the flood risk has gone from medium to high and could drastically increase our homeowner's insurance rate if not dealt with quickly. Um, FEMA maps, obviously, we all know, use LIDAR to detect water ground, on the ground surface water levels. The increased surface water levels, um, is actually visible around the entire wetlands now. So not to mention the fact that the drainage culvert that is actually, um, completely submerged now, the water that flows through there is, flows through at a very, very fast speed. And there is a real possibility that children in the area could get sucked into that. Um, obviously, that is not a preference. So if anything the county can do to approve the funds, to fix the culvert, increase the capacity so that the flooding does not continue, and hopefully we can prevent any additional potentially irreparable property damage and bodily harm to anybody in the neighborhood. And I think that's about all I have to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you for making time to be with us. I'm sorry, ma'am, we're, we're going to be able to meet after this, so it, no, we'll, we don't allow folks to come back. We promise we'll be able to follow up right after the meeting. Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for appreciating our rules of procedure to respect everybody's time.
Uh, next we have Nancy. Uh, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, hi, um, my name's Nancy, and I wanted to comment on the Community Conflict Resolution Day. Um, I think that that's a really cool idea, um, but I had noticed on the paper about it, it said that Pierce County promotes the use of and access to creative and productive community-based dispute resolutions by highly qualified mediators, but it doesn't mention who those mediators are. And then later on, it talks about the different types of conflicts that the Center for Dialogue and Disputes, uh, is supposed to like, care of. And as somebody, as a homeowner who used to rent, uh, to people, I can tell you that, uh, they are not as helpful or effective as you would hope. Um, in fact, most of the time, they like turn down, like, or just blatantly ignore, uh, emails and things like that. Um, they only cater to like a very specific thing. So like, if we're going to have a Community Conflict Resolution Day, maybe it should be focused more on actual resolutions than that one organization that has not been very helpful in the past. I would also like to comment on the fact that Tacoma Police Department does not, uh, respond to medical aid calls even when the person dies, and they will not file a report even when the person dies, and there's video footage of the incident. And, you know, then somebody gets like using their debit cards after they've died, like months after they've died, people are still using their debit cards. Uh, the fraud department will not acknowledge that it's fraud even if the person goes in to the SHS and gets a new EBT card in the person's name and then spends that money. They will not acknowledge that any crime has been committed, and it is, it, it's disrespectful and it's, uh, does not look very highly upon the Pierce County sheriffs or the Tacoma Police Department or any of the agencies associated. Um, and, you know, it all, uh, stems back to South Sound 911, um, dispatching medical aid for a situation that should have gotten a police response. So like, maybe, maybe more training is needed or something, I don't, I don't know. But it's very worrisome that there's people out there walking around, killing people, and all they have to do is call and say that it, they need medical aid, and they know that they will get away with that murder, and it is very scary to know that. Um, so I just wanted to shine light on that, especially if we're going to talk about a Conflict Resolution Day. Also, the Pierce County Sheriff and the TBD Internal Affairs Complaint Process is a joke. Okay, thank you. I feel better now.
Thank you for being with us.
And we have no more hands at this time, Chair.
With no other hands, we're going to close the community forum portion of our meeting. Uh, appreciate everyone who's taken the time to, um, share, uh, what's important to them. For the individuals, uh, especially those who came all the way down here, to share about flooding in their area and the need for increased culvert capacity. We did ask Mr. Swanson to come back into the council chambers. He staffs, uh, surface water management issues for the Pierce County Council. He'll be a great resource, so we want to make sure he touches base with all of you before you leave, that he gets your contact information and is able to support Councilmember Crowver and you and any appropriate follow-up and next steps. So thank you, Mr. Swanson, for coming back into the chambers, and we're just going to encourage you to, to connect after the, after the council meeting. Um, we take your concerns really seriously about, um, about your property. We're at Section 11, Other Business. Is there any other business or announcements by council members? Well, this is the final, uh, time, I think I get to remind folks that, um, Interstate 5 through Fife will be closed in both directions overnight on Friday, October 17th. That's this weekend, Friday, October 17th and Saturday, October 18th, starting at about 10:00 PM, all lanes, both directions, closed, uh, Interstate 5 in Fife. So don't go there. Stay home. Washington State Department of Transportation constructs a new bridge over their freeway. This is the, the connection of Highway 167 through Fife to the Port of Tacoma. All lanes, all directions. This should be the final weekend of closure from about 10:00 PM till about 8:00 AM in the morning, both Friday and Saturday. So this is the final weekend of closures for this project. Um, we're also told tonight, actually, it's going down to one lane, so it's going to be almost as miserable as closed, all lanes, both directions, uh, overnight, so don't go there. Tonight, Tuesday night. Um, I'm told it's down to one lane tonight, Tuesday night. And then this Friday and Saturday, all lanes, both directions, closed. Ms. Long, any other business for council?
Nothing today, thank you.
With no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.